I believe we are live. Terrific. Thank you, Ms. Aguilera. Sorry.
I did. Can I get? I don't know.
If there is any employee that's watching this meeting live on Zoom, if you could teams Ms. Angie so we know the audio is working, that would be really awesome. I want to make sure that the audio is going out in Zoom as well as the recording picking it up. I know there's employees watching right now.
Yeah.
Please send me a.
Please, that's an invitation.
Send Ms. Angie its message. So we can verify. Roy text me.
That's on my computer. Normally he has it.
Oh, Roy's computer's not set up. Your own Kevin is not there. Operations. Chuck says we're good. Okay. Well, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. This is Chair Catherine Harrington with a full complement of District Commissioners, Commissioner Roy Rogers, Vice Chair Nafee Safai, Commissioner Pam Treese, and Commissioner Jerry Willie. We are going to jump right into our agenda. The first item is to consider applicants for the Housing Advisory Committee. Since staff isn't here, I will summarize that this is an update to the board for seven or eight applications received to fill two open positions on the Housing Advisory Committee. The number of applications for each of the positions, we had seven for member-at-large and one for the veterans' position, but then that veteran's application withdrew their application. So this is an opportunity. Let's see, we have. It's a proposal to appoint Nathan Teskey, who are familiar with from as the Executive Director of Biennestar, to be appointed to the one member-at-large position, and we'll have to try again on the veterans' position. So all of the associated folks were included in the packet. Will the board be ready to approve this at an upcoming board meeting?
Absolutely.
Yes. Terrific.
I'm very pleased that Nathan is going to be joining.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. And are you Bienna? Absolutely. Both of you. We surprised you because we started.
So I just want to take this opportunity to introduce Bienna. My name is Melissa Sinzala. I'm the Policy and Planning Manager for Housing Services. Bienna Valdez joined us in December, and Bienna is our new Community Engagement Coordinator of Shared Position between OEICE and Housing. And one of Bienna's primary roles will be coordinating our Housing Advisory Committee.
Terrific.
So I just wanted to make sure that you all knew and recognize Bienna, and hopefully you'll have more opportunities to hear from us in the future.
Yes. Great. Thank you very much for joining us and for the good work in getting applicants and vetting them for us and providing us.
That was pretty competitive.
Good recommendations. Yes, yes. Well, our, I believe our community members know how vital having affordable housing and homelessness solutions is. And people really care and want to see us succeed. So that's a good thing for us.
Thank you very much.
You're so much.
You bet.
Good one. Thanks for stopping in. Okay, the next one. Our CFO, Mr. Greg Mun, will be up because we have a bunch of Budget Committee appointments to take care of.
Great. Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. It's great to see you all here, all five of you, on a beautiful sunny day outside.
We don't get to play hooky.
Yep. Nope, not at all.
Spring sunshine. We have spring break next week.
First day of spring today.
Oh, it is. Thank you.
Yeah. So the purpose of today's item is to review the recommended appointments to the county's three budget committees. That's specifically the Washington County Service, Washington County and Service District for Lighting Number One, the Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District, and Urban Road Maintenance District, and the North Bethany County Service District for Roads. I have to write this out because.
Three of them are.
Odds of saying at least one word are pretty high. Each Budget Committee is composed of the governing body, that's you, and an equal number of electors appointed by the governing body. Appointments are made for staggering three-year terms, and the committees meet as often as necessary to complete the budget business, which includes receiving the budget message, receiving public input deliberations, and approval of their respective appointments. Washington County and Service District for Lighting Number One Budget Committee has three vacancies and received four applications as listed on the second page of the staff report. Staff recommends the appointments of Sig, Unander, Jeff, Sarafa, and Melissa Laird. The fourth applicant, Rashant. Practice this. A ruleless, a rules Sakaran.
Did better than some.
Yep. Also applied for the Audit Committee, and as after a conversation, that was his preference. And he'll be considered for appointment to the Audit Committee on an upcoming appointment session. Melissa Laird currently sits on the ESPD URMD Budget Committee and will vacate that seat on approval of her appointment to the Washington County and Service District for Lighting Number One Budget Committee. The.
What committee is she leading?
ESPD.
Oh, okay.
The ESPD URMD Budget Committee has two vacancies, one of those being Melissa's as well, and received two applications as listed beginning on page seven of the staff report. Staff recommends the appointment of Darren Campbell and Pradna Patil. North Bethany County Service District for Roads Budget Committee has one vacancy and received one applicant as shown on page forty of the staff report. Staff recommends reappointing Dan Reed to another term. Dan has been on the committee since two thousand and seventeen. Each application was reviewed and each applicant was interviewed.
I have one, not on the people as much as it is the setup. I want to make sure before we actually appoint these individuals that they know the expectation is that they will be in the room for the meetings as opposed to zooming in.
That was clarified more than once with.
Okay.
Ahead of time.
Great. Thank you. Any board questions on any of these appointments? On Mr. Anander for the Service District for Lighting? It says that he was an elected city councillor. Do you know what city? Forest Grove?
Forest Grove or Cornelius.
Oh, cool.
Thank you, Lilsen. Forest Grove. I've known Sig for in and out of our paths, possibly around here, but yeah.
Cool. I've not had the honor of meeting him, so that's great.
And there's no, there's no problem with Melissa. She does a great job on URMDAC as well. So.
Yeah, she can still do that.
Yeah.
Great. I think we're all set, and you'll be bringing this to us in an upcoming board meeting.
April second, Consent Agenda.
Terrific.
Okay, thank you.
We don't usually do board appointments on Consent Agenda. It's its own standalone thing, and I.
Under the, it'll be on its own standalone with no staff presentation.
Yeah.
Yep.
I usually just announce the appointments. We approve them and go from there.
Yep.
Yeah. No worries. We had you. Okay, next, we're going to move on to elections. 'Tis the season. Now, have we caught the elections, folks? By surprise as well?
Thirty minutes ahead.
Go to the executive session. No, because we have folks arranged for that too. So I could, I could kick off our Board of Leadership communication if you'd like.
Why don't you do that?
Okay. But first I have to find my little cheat sheet note. Okay, so I sent you all an email about the results of the Port Facilities Task Force prioritization and what the next steps are. So it's in your inbox. Victory for SHSTCBP. Last week, we approved our first work plan for one of the six goals. Yay. The landlord retention and recruitment work plan. Like our liaison, Commissioner Willie, I attended the Public Safety Coordinating Council Meeting last week. I'm not the liaison. He is, but he in the committee.
Yeah, I was late, so you covered for the first.
Put up my active involvement. But I'm really hoping we'll tap into them for public safety levy planning, jail capacity planning, and Measure One Ten Reform, because they've got untapped potential. Okay, my biggest portion of report out is related to Metro SHS. So I wrote it out. As I prepared, or as I prepare for the second Metro Regional Housing Stakeholder Advisory Table Meeting, which is tomorrow, Wednesday, I looked back at Metro Council public meetings. It's somewhat ironic that just today, well, today the tri-county chairs have a meeting late this afternoon with Governor Brown, Governor Kotek, sorry, with Governor Kotek on Metro SHS and this stakeholder table and affordable housing. But also today, the Metro Council Work Session includes the SHS Year Two Annual Report. And they had received recently, they went over the, for the first time ever, the county quarterly reports. So I watched that. That was on March fifth. It's nice to see that they're paying more attention and also sharing their questions and comments in public meetings, specifically work sessions, which is something they previously weren't doing with their biweekly two-on-one briefings. Some commi, some councillors want more data, which stouts me given how much we have to deliver in addition to the services. But others are simply learning about the basics of funding for supportive housing services and homelessness, such as the things we, we as a county document through our ARPA reports with the county direct receipt of, of ARPA dollars, as well as from state ARPA dollars, let alone, you know, in that state ARPA dollars really helped with rental assistance for eviction prevention, but also all of our other reports for HUD and so forth. I'm, I find it a little sad the result of the Oversight Committee Report. We're building a system, a regional system, and the workforce, and that includes through the CBOs. But all of the results of that are not something that I see the council really cognizant of yet. And in my opinion, too many council in watching these multiple work sessions of theirs, too, in my opinion, too many council members think that they're the only elected officials being held accountable on homelessness. So it's interesting. So onward ho we go. But once again, kudos to them for talking about SHS in public work sessions. They did so November twenty-eighth. On January sixteenth, they had a public meeting about their Regional Housing Stakeholder Advisory Table. Then on March fifth, they went over the county quarterly reports, and then today the annual report, which will be coming to us. So that's it from. Oh, but I also want to thank Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Denise for carpooling down to the special AOC meeting yesterday. And it was a good meeting. Our full GR team was there. Brenda was there, Brenda Bartlett for information for you as well. So it was a really great meeting, in my opinion, very reassuring. So really helped ground me in a very positive way.
And we broke no quarrels.
Oh, heck no. We weren't deliberating.
Thought you'd like to hear that.
Yeah.
Chair Harrington was in the car.
I was just the Uber driver.
No. It was, we were convened by AOC. That's part of it. It's just a system. So, okay, we're going to move to our next agenda topic. Thank you for your flexibility, gentlemen, because we're a little faster than our posted agenda. So you're here to give us a little bit of information on the two thousand and twenty-four election cycle, and especially the May twenty-first primary. Are you ready for May? I'm just catching up with the fact that it's almost April.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioner Harrington and Board of Commissioners. For the record, my name is Joe Nelson. I'm the Director of Assessment and Taxation for Records and Elections. And with me today is Dan Forrester. He's the Elections Division Manager. And as you mentioned, it's going to be a busy year in elections. Our purpose today is not looking for a decision, but purely just giving information. Yeah, it's going to be primarily about the, the, the things that we're doing to ensure a smooth and transparent election this year. And with that, I'll just turn it over to Dan.
Thank you, Joe. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners. Once again, my name's Dan Forrester, Elections Division Manager, and I'm pleased to present this report on our planning and preparations for the May twenty-first primary election. For the next slide.
Well, you have the power with.
Oh, I do.
You're right there.
Yep. So first of all is our agenda. So the first thing we'll talk about is what is on the ballot, the candidate contest and measure questions that are on the ballot. Next, we'll talk about our plans to staff up for the presidential election cycle and to make sure that we have trained personnel in place to be successful. We'll also talk about the physical and IT security plans that we're making and what we're doing to preserve community trust in elections, review some key deadlines and milestones, and then finally talk about our plans for reporting the unofficial results and the certification of the election. So the first item, what's on the ballot? So this is a primary election. So we have, we have partisan ballots. We have the Democratic and Republican ballots. We also have a ballot with no partisan contests, and those are for non-affiliated voters or voters that are not affiliated with the two major parties. So the partisan candidate nominating contests, we have federal contests, just two this election. We have US President and Congressional. Washington County has parts of District One and Six Congressional Districts. And then on the statewide level, we have a few partisan candidate contests. We have Secretary of State, State Treasurer, Attorney General. We also have State Senator, just Districts fourteen and eighteen. And of course, all of the state representatives are up for reelection this year. And Washington County has House Districts twenty-five through thirty-seven, or whole or part of those districts. And then on the nonpartisan line there, we have judicial contests. And so these are Supreme Court, Court of Appeals, Judge of the Tax Court, and Circuit Court. And of course, on the local level, we have Washington County Commissioner, Districts One and Three, Washington County Sheriff, and then City of Beaverton, Mayor, and three council positions. And I should mention that City of Beaverton is the only city on the ballot in May. All of the other cities are on the November general election ballot.
Yeah, I was wondering, King City, they're gonna be in the November ballot?
Yep, they will be on the November ballot.
Thank you.
Yep. And then we have a number of measure questions on the ballot as well. And I should mention, just at the outset, there are no statewide measures on the ballot, no countywide measures. And I have some just brief descriptions of these measures, which are all taken from the filed questions. So first is thirty-four, three-two-seven, North Plains Referendum. This is a referendum to repeal North Plains Ordinance Four-Nine-Zero. And then we have Measure thirty-four, three-three-two, Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue Local Option Levy. It's a new property tax for fire and emergency medical services. City of Tigard has two measures on the ballot. One is a renewal of a local option levy. The other one is a charter question. Voters are asked to approve a new charter, which would add two councillors and amend term limits. Thirty-four, three-three-five for Banks Fire District is a renewal of their local option levy for fire and emergency medical services. Two-six, two-four-four is a Metro Zoo Bond. Voters are going to be asked to approve issuance of bonds to support the Oregon Zoo. Thirty-four, three-three-seven, Tuolton Hills Parks and Recreation Local Option Levy, a new tax for operations, safety, and maintenance of THPRD facilities. And finally, Banks School District is a bond measure for improving safety, health, and security in renovating facilities, Banks School District. So those are all of the measures right now on the ballot.
So that, those, there's really only, I live in Hillsborough. So there's only one that I'm going to vote, be voting.
On?
On, thank you for that, is the Metro Zoo Bond. The rest of them are all pretty much localized to the cities that's there. So I was looking at the Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue as well, but who, what, who votes for that? I mean.
Beaverton, a lot of unincorporated, Washington County, Tigard, Tuolton, yeah.
Okay, so everybody that has TVFNR.
Yeah.
Services.
Big district.
Okay, yeah, okay, that's what I thought.
And Newper, places where they're serving, but not.
Yeah, but that would be.
I know, it's not our county.
Yeah, I know, they're served, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's Clackamas.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Right, yeah, Joe just reminded me. So there are a number of different ballot styles this election. So depending on where you live, you, you know, you could get any combination of these. There's up to seven hundred ballot styles for this election, so there's a lot of permutations.
One hundred?
One hundred, right. Yep.
Wow.
And then the other item here is we have precinct committee person contests on the ballot. And precinct committee persons, or PCPs, are elected representatives of the Democratic and Republican Parties for each precinct. Of course, they are only going to appear on the partisan ballots. So if a voter is affiliated with the Democratic or Republican Party, they will see the PCP contests. Otherwise, they will not. Okay, so high-level planning for the election. We're expecting a mid-range turnout for this election, somewhere between forty and fifty percent. And this is based on comparisons to comparable primaries in the recent past. If we, if we get fifty percent turnout, we'll get about two hundred thousand ballots back. Right now, our voter registration is right around four hundred thousand. And because we're going to get a more than usual number of ballots back this year, both in the May and the November, and because we're going to have a greater than usual number of customer service interactions, we need to ramp up staffing. So we need to focus on building that trained temporary worker pool, especially this May. We're ready for November. Also, we're highly focused on proactive steps to keep the public and the workers and the process safe this year. Been to some details of staffing and security. So I'll start with staffing. We're, we're really treating this need for new temporary workers as a great opportunity, strengthen our capacity to deliver safe, secure, and trusted election results. One of the things about our election workers is not only do they help us with the day-to-day logistics of processing the election, but they're also great ambassadors in the community. And so they share with their friends and their family and other people in their community how elections really work. And they tell about the secure process, and they refute conspiracy theories, and they also dispel misinformation. So when we train up a new temporary worker, we're really training an ambassador for the community. So it's really part of our outreach. We're going to have around two hundred temporary workers in the May primary. And then I'd also be remiss if, when talking about help, temporary help, I didn't acknowledge and celebrate the contribution of other folks in the county from other divisions within ANT and other departments to come and help us picking up ballots at the drop sites, helping us run our sorter, doing all kinds of things. We just couldn't do it without them.
These are, these are paid temporary workers.
That's right. All of our temporary workers are paid.
Maybe this is the time for me to ask this question. How much impact on staffing does the ranked choice voting in Portland for our limited number of voters have? And are calls referred to Portland for those answers?
That'll happen later this year. Not in May.
It's a great question. Yeah, the Chair is right. It's going to be implemented with the November two thousand and twenty-four election. So that's when those City of Portland contests will be on the ballot. It's going to be a little more work for us, but I don't think it's going to have a huge impact. We have a memorandum of understanding with Multnomah and Clackamas Counties, which are the other City of Portland counties. And we have some systems in place to to really manage that, I think.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. So moving on to security, on the security front. We're working with a number of partners at different levels to help make sure that the process and the people are kept safe, starting with Washington County Sheriff's Office. They're going to be providing essential support onsite around Election Day. And we've had a lot of conversations with them about what, what we need from them. We also are going to have non-uniformed, non-law enforcement folks in our lobby. And the reason we make this choice is because we, we want to make sure that we, we're recognizing that not everybody in the community has the same relationship with law enforcement. For some folks, an armed officer might be intimidating or threatening. And so we're making sure that we can, while we are keeping a secure space, that we're also making sure that the elections office is non-intimidating and not threatening. We're working with local police on traffic control and incident response planning. And we're also working with federal agencies on training, assessment, and analysis. We have next month with one of our federal partners, a de-escalation training for our staff. Also worked with another agency on white powder response. So you may recall that in the November two thousand and twenty-three election, a number of elections offices in the Northwest and throughout the country received suspicious mail, and some of it was containing white powder. And in some cases, it was determined that was a dangerous substance. And so it really was a wake-up call for a lot of us to think about what we would do if we were confronted with a situation like that. And so we've had a great conversation with some, some federal partners, as well as other county clerks, about how we would respond. So even though I'm unable to talk about all of our, the aspects of our physical security planning, I just want to make sure that you know that we're thinking deeply about our security posture and our potential responses. I just wanna make sure that you know that we're thinking deeply about our security posture and our potential responses, and that we're engaged in constant improvement, and that more, most importantly, we have really good partners at the county, local police departments, and at the federal level, who are giving us what we need to be safe and secure.
Given that and what's on this slide, I want to compliment the department on the level of service that you have provided through all elections previous. It's been really interesting to just stop by and say hello, you know, during the time of the ballot collection, not just day of. And I was particularly impressed by how welcoming, not only just in the building, but around the building, and the on-call ballot setup for people that needed a replacement ballot or whatever. You've always done an incredible job of balancing customer service and also making sure that all of the employees, permanent or temporary, feel secure. And I just wanna bring voice to that. It's been exemplary, and I can't imagine what, what the extent of, of planning that you do, scenario setup and encouragement. But as a community member, it's just been so positive and welcoming. Thank you.
Thank you very much, that's great to hear, and I'll be sure to share that with our team. So also, on the security side, we are concerned with IT security. We have a very good collaborative relationship with ITS. And the Elections Department, the Elections Division, has a layered security model. So we have the, the outer layer is the, the physical security of the building, making sure that only authorized personnel are in the secure areas of the operation. And then we also are making sure that we, as county employees, are the human firewall for our IT systems, keeping the county network safe. And beyond that, there's another layer, which is our tabulation system. And our tabulation system is the computer network where we design and scan and count the ballots. And this is very critical infrastructure, and so we have to be very careful to keep this safe. And so we're following industry-best practices there, keeping it separate from the county network, as well as the internet generally, call this air gapping the system. And so that's, that's part of the, the layered security model. We also are collaborating with ITS on audits of the Elections Division, just to recognize risks and opportunities for improvement. And ITS staff, we've engaged with them to be onsite on Election Day and at other critical times, just in case there's something that comes up. And there's often things that come up, so they often have something to do. And then finally, our IT systems are designed to avoid single points of failure. And also, we back up critical information in order to ensure the smooth continuity of operations, even in the event of a disruption. That's just built into the system. And then, while it's very important to maintain the physical security and the IT security, it's also critically important that we maintain the public trust in elections. So there are a lot of ways that we do this. One of them, very important, is, you know, partnering with our communications team. Saw Philip in here earlier, but he's a really important part, a really important partner for us in getting the word out, when, especially if there's misinformation in the community. We also will partner with the Secretary of State's Elections Division on combating miss, dis, and malinformation when it arises. And we also are making sure that we're always pointing the public and concerned voters towards trusted sources of information, whether that's our website or the Secretary of State's website. And that also that we're delivering trusted information in a variety of ways, whether that's through media interviews, or community outreach, or public events that we're part of. We also make ourselves available for tours, for a single person who's interested, or for a school or other community group. We're always making ourselves available for tours. Recognizing that our website is a critical part of our communication strategy, we put a top priority on making sure that it is always updated with the most current information. That's very important to us. And then also, we have a tool that we've been using since twenty-twenty-one called Ballot Trax, which allows us to deliver proactively information to voters that are signed up for the service. So voters that are signed up for Ballot Trax will receive messages when ballots are sent out, and then when a voted ballot is received by the Elections Office, when a voted ballot is accepted, and then also if there is a signature challenge or other problem with the ballot. Currently, we have about twenty-two thousand Washington County voters signed up for the service. I expect that that number is probably gonna jump this year, since we have a presidential year. And then also, on the subject of preserving community trust, it's fundamental that, to that effort, that we are fully transparent about our processes. And we are open to anybody who asks, you know, to share how we do things. So members of the community, we invite them to observe the Elections Operation. And we have an observation room, which perhaps some of you have seen, where observers can watch processes via closed-circuit video. They can watch ballot sorting, ballot opening, ballot scanning. And they can also see on screen, on monitors, they can see signature verification, and then ballot adjudication processes projecting directly from election workers' workstations. So those are some of our offerings there. And because people in the observer community often have a lot of questions about elections and require an enhanced level of customer service, we have personnel that we've dedicated specifically to interfacing with them on Election Day and the day before Election Day when we're busiest. And this helps lessen the burden on election staff, especially our frontline customer service staff. And it also gives the observers answers more quickly, and it's been very well received by the observer crew. And of course, we also offer tours and information sessions that are specifically tailored to the observers.
Have we had a tour?
Not together, we have separately. You went to the old one, I haven't been to the new one, I'd like to go.
Well, you're always welcome.
Okay.
I have a common question before you go on to your next slide, if, Chair, if you're sort of.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Comment. I can't tell you the number of times I get approached by various groups and people saying, is it legit in Washington County? And I always defend, and I always say, there's always fraud, there's fraud in every system. Fraud, if you interpret it, it's not, it's miniscule. Somebody's voting somebody else's ballot, that's all we got, we've got a great system. But do you think it's appropriate, or would be wise, not just to make this kind of presentation to us, but to use Philip and similar resources at the county to get ahead of that, the elections? Because I'm frankly a little tired of hearing the same question over and over again. I don't know what else you can do, other than get ahead of it and tell the public that our systems are sound, that are a great job. But I think not everybody's heard it yet, I mean, said it, but not to the right party. So what, so what do you think?
So when I hear those sorts of questions from the public, the first thing I do is invite them to come in and tour the Elections Facility and talk to us, and so we can figure out what their specific concerns are and address them. But I think you're right, I think there is room on the communications side that we can, we can improve our kind of proactive communication describing the process for folks. Actually, we have a, a project that works right now. I've been working with our, our communications team on sort of creating or reworking an old video offering that we had, that I'd like to put on our website that describes the ballot process. And I feel like it, we've, we've tailored it in such a way that it addresses a lot of the concerns that people have nowadays, especially about fraud, or, you know, people voting more than one ballot, things like that that you hear about.
One, one piece of data that might be interesting for us to hear, in general, not a specific number, but about, you talked about how there are about four hundred thousand registered voters. If we have a fifty percent turnout, that would be about a two hundred thousand ballots. Generally, what percentage of ballots get rejected? Either because ballots are damaged, or the signatures don't verify? I imagine that it's something in the partial of one percent.
Yeah, the, the number of ballots that are, that comes to us damaged, it's a very small number. And we're able to count those generally. We do, the, the number of ballots that we reject is minuscule. And we, we reject a ballot if it were, if a ballot envelope were returned with no ballot inside, or with two ballots inside, which sometimes happens.
Or a really bad signature.
So that's another category, and we call that a, a signature challenge. And so that's a much bigger category, and it's somewhere probably in the neighborhood of one and a half percent. But it really depends on the election. We're gonna have higher signature challenge rates in a presidential election than we are in a special district election.
Because you have more ballots.
Right.
Yep, yeah. And if anyone is concerned about the way they currently sign their name versus when they originally signed up, feel free to go to the Elections Office and submit a new signature card. I had to do that because after my first year of signing every contract in triplicate, I was concerned, so.
Commissioner Rogers, to kind of your question, if, if board members or community members that may be watching this do have questions about the process, I would suggest to reach out to our Elections Division or reach out to me directly, so we can connect that conversation. As the team has shared, that one-on-one conversation to understand what the process is, give the tour, explain that has been much more impactful for those that may have those questions about open, transparent, secure elections than just a blanket communications. So I just commend the, the Department for continuing to keep that open door and inviting community in, into that process.
With all due respect, they expect that you're gonna say something. They're gonna expect the CEO to say something. And they're kinda asking us on the side, is it real, tell us the real stuff.
We don't have to prove anything, it's peer-reviewed.
Oh, I hear that, I get it. But it'd be nice if there was some forward message we could say.
I also.
It's a good system, yeah.
And in response to that, I think that we, no matter what the issue is, we're talking about vaccinations, if we're talking, whatever we're talking about. I think that we need to recognize conspiracy theorists and not be addressing that piece. I think I, I have the utmost respect for you, and I understand the question, but at the same time, I don't, I, I don't believe it's our job to chase every conspiracy, conspiracy theory.
I think it's more than the conspiracy folks, it's just much part of the world, but that's okay.
Okay.
I do, yeah, thank you. So moving on to the deadlines and milestones slide here, the, the table on this slide and the one following shows some of the important deadlines and milestones for the election. The first one, of course, is already passed, the March twelfth candidate filing deadline. But we have one coming up, the March twenty-first measure filing deadline. And this is the point at which we know all of the, everything that's going to be on the ballot, all of the measures that are gonna be on the ballot. And immediately after this Thursday deadline, we begin our ballot design and proofing process. And as I mentioned before, we have about seven hundred ballot styles. So it really has to, it's a very time-consuming process for designing and proofing. And it's exhaustive, and we have to make sure the ballots are a hundred percent correct. We don't have very much time, because on April fifth, we have to send out our first ballots. Those are the ballots that go out to the military and overseas voters. And then twenty-nine days before Election Day, on April twenty-second, we send out ballots to voters who are temporarily out of state. And then on April thirtieth, we have our voter registration and party choice deadline. So persons residing in Oregon who are not registered to vote in Oregon as of that deadline, they need to, they need to register by that deadline in order to receive a ballot for the election. People who are inactive, or who just need to update, they update, or make themselves active at any point up to Election Day. But this is also the deadline to choose a party affiliation. And so if the voter wishes to receive a Democratic or Republican ballot, they need to indicate that and fill out the form by this date. And the day after the registration deadline is May first, twenty days before Election Day. This is when we mail out ballots to all of the other voters, not, you know, who are living in the state. And then as soon as those go out, we start to receive a large number of ballots back, we're checking signatures. And as we get closer to Election Day, we start opening envelopes, taking out the ballots, and running them through our tabulation system, which is counting them. But nobody sees the results until the eight o'clock deadline on Election Day, which of course is May twenty-first. And at that point, at eight o'clock, the first unofficial results are released. And then we begin kind of our post-Election Day processes. And one of those is, so recent legislation, I think it was twenty-twenty-one, allowed voters to, allowed Elections Offices to accept ballots that were mailed in, as long as they were postmarked on or before Election Day. But we do have to receive those within seven days. And so the deadline there to accept those ballots is May twenty-eighth. So if we receive a ballot after that day, even if it is postmarked on or before Election Day, we can't accept it.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is the first presidential election year where that new legislation takes effect, right?
Yeah, I believe that's correct, yeah. And then for those voters whose signature was challenged.
Sorry, just go back, I'm sorry if I missed something here. Is that a state regulation, not a federal, right?
Right, that is Oregon state law. And then for those voters whose signatures were challenged, they have three weeks after Election Day to fix those signature challenges. And we try to make it as easy as possible, we communicate with all of those voters and send them a form. But they have until the eleventh of June to fix those challenges.
Would I have, as a Ballot Trax user myself, if my signature was challenged, would I also get a Ballot Trax message?
Yes, yeah, we, we would send you a letter, but we would also, with a form, giving you what you need to fix the situation. And we would also send you a text, email, or voice message, or all three, if you had chosen, all three options.
Okay, thank you.
In that May twenty-eight category, postmarked ballot, I don't care about that date, because it's all, what percentage usually is out of the total vote, couldn't be very many.
Well, we only had one year experience.
What was it, do you think?
So again, it, it, it depends on the election. I think in the, in the November twenty-two election, we had a few hundred come in after Election Day. But yeah, proportionally, it's not very large. Of course, in a, in a presidential election, that number could be a lot more left to see. Another, another.
About some of those measures.
That would be important, yeah.
You know, with some of those smaller towns, it could come down to single digits, like the King City, we called it.
That's true.
Right.
Question me here, twelve votes.
Yeah, that's right, Travis was twelve votes, yeah.
Sorry, we go.
That's fine, another factor, of course, is just voter behavior. And as people get used to that postmark deadline, that postmark rule, they might start sending in their ballots later. And so over time, we might see that number grow. I think of, like in Washington State, where they have a similar postmark rule, they receive a large number of ballots back after Election Day. And then finally, on June seventeenth, we have the certification deadline. This is when the final official results are, are released. We send them to the Secretary of State's office and to all of the districts that are participating in the election.
Well, and I'll also give a plug for the posting that you do, not only on our website, but the Secretary of State's website. And the signage at the ballot drop-offs. That, you know, I'm, I always enjoy seeing the signs out there and watching what what's happening. Yeah, it all builds public trust. Yes, yes. Good job. What, what, I think I should know this, but I can't come up with it. What percentage are ballots are dropped off versus mailed in?
Approximately sixty percent in the drop boxes, forty percent mailed.
Wow. I would have thought it was the first. Sixty percent drop-off. I always drop. I always drop. Oh, it's dropped.
Forty percent mailing surprises me.
I mail, I mail. But I, well, I, now I drop because I'm here. I'll do anything to increase my odds that my vote will count. Well, that's. Me too. I got that trust.
So then, yeah, forty-sixty. So then finally, results reporting. Uh, the unofficial results, as I mentioned before, are available beginning at eight o'clock PM on Election Day. Then we update those results twice more on Election Day, typically at ten o'clock and then again at midnight. And then at a minimum, we would update results on our website and the Secretary of State's Election Night Reporting page each Friday until we get to the certification deadline. Of course, we have the option to do it more frequently. And in November twenty-two, the board requested that we increase the frequency of results reporting. And if you'd like us to do that in this election, we're happy to do that. The, and then finally, the results are certified on June seventeenth. Those are the final results. Just want to say thank you for your time and attention. It's nice to have this opportunity.
Any other questions or comments, board members? You're brave to give this presentation to all of us that have been in the process.
I I have a question. For all, which I had just been jogging down, just a minor detail of questions. Uh, your slide about the PCP, first of all, I should say thank you for your great presentation. This is really good information. And I too had a number of constituents in twenty twenty-three that reached out about election-related questions, whether conspiracy or not, they were valid questions, and these are voters. They're not, you know, these are regular voters, admitted. So I think it's valid, and we do have a duty to ease their mind, address their frustrations. I intend to cut this presentation and share. So these questions I'm asking come sort of well for me, but as well as some other constituents that reached out. So question about the PCP part.
Right.
People can, they're, what about write-in PCP? People who don't want to appear on the ballot for political reasons, don't want to show their political party or whatnot, but can be written in.
Right. So anybody that wants to appear on the ballot as a PCP must file by the March twelfth candidate filing deadline. But if they just want to be a write-in candidate, then they need to, there's another form that they have to fill out, and they just need to submit that by the eight o'clock deadline on Election Day.
On Election Day.
That's right.
Okay.
And and some people do avail themselves of that option for exactly the reason that you indicated.
Right, yeah. It used to be that they didn't have to file a form at all. They only had to get ten people to write them in. Is that, does that still hold?
Yeah, the the rules have changed around PCPs. So so there are, the the PCP calculation is there are two PCPs for each precinct and the, and then two hundred and fifty, sorry, one PCP for every two hundred and fifty voters registered in the precinct. So in some precincts, you could have forty PCP positions. Some you just have two. We have to put a write-in line for all of those. And so we used to have to count all of the write-ins, which was, which would take a week in the Elections Office. But recent legislation has made it so that we only have to count the folks that are filed candidates, they're printed on the ballot, or they've submitted the write-in PCP form, or they've been nominated by somebody else to have their, have votes for them counted as a PCP.
And they only need three.
That's right, three.
And then the other detailed question is, you mentioned, and I think later on you clarified this, but just for clarification, the forty to fifty percent percentage listed on one of the slides, those are registered voters or assumed?
Turnout of registered voters.
Yeah, the the forty to fifty percent is, yeah, the percentage of registered voters that send in a ballot.
The the next two questions relate to what Commissioner Rogers were asking. They're meant to ask differently. First one I'll just ask is volunteers. Do you have volunteers, people who volunteer in the elections often?
We don't have any volunteers. We, all of our workers are paid.
Okay. Now, the second question is the workers, temporary workers. These are workers who are vetted, just like a regular employee? Or is it just the seasonal workers, just like stores would have, or?
So they are, they are temporary workers, and we we work through a temporary agency to assign them. And we have processes in place to make sure that we are monitoring their work. So they're very closely managed.
Cool, okay. I won't go into details of it, but the next last question, this is the Ballot Trax. How do people access? How do I register?
Probably the easiest way would be to go to the Elections Division website. And prominently, in the middle of the page, we've got a a tile that click on and go to the Ballot Trax website to sign up.
There's also been information in the voter's pamphlet about it, how to sign up.
And we also include a an insert in the ballot packet as well that directs people to a website to sign up.
Would any of that information, I think you mentioned Philip's name earlier in any of the communication? Would this be some of the communication that go to people before the ballots drop or?
So the Ballot, the Ballot Trax communication? Yeah, so the the first communication that folks signed up for the service will get will be a message on May first, telling them that their ballot is in the mail. Uh, and then the only other communication that they get are when we receive the ballot and then when we have accepted the ballot, so that their vote will be counted, and then if there is a problem with the ballot. It is a flexible system, though, so if we needed to send out messages, other messages, we could tailor them to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Joe. You all are doing a hard job out there, and we appreciate your service.
And we really appreciate all your support as well. So thank you so much.
Any other board questions or comments? Thank you very much. Here we go. Okay, we're still a little bit ahead of schedule. Good for us. Uh, we're going to go to executive session, and then after that, we will take a break. Uh, and we're expecting to resume on topic six at, excuse me, topic five at three thirty-five. So next, I'd like to ask the board for a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to ORS one nine two point six six zero, subject to the purposes of discussion of potential litigation with regard to clean water services. Second, all those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We are going to adjourn to executive session. So anyone who is not related to this.